In 2007, the number one issue at our league-sponsored city council forums was the projected costs associated with employee healthcare benefits for retirees. Reforms put in place over the last five years have reduced the city's other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, projected liability by $186 million. However, the city still has a projected liability of $192 million. So our question to the candidate is this: Have you any suggestions or ideas on how the city might further address this projected taxpayer liability? We're going to be starting with Skip Sandman.
And that deficit that we're facing here, I think that can only be accomplished with true negotiations. I mean, everybody's sitting down at the table and coming into an agreement. And that's the only way that anything is really done when you're talking this big deficit. What we have, we need to sit down and we need to negotiate and talk so that we can come up with a win-win situation for both, for everybody involved in it. That's how I would handle that. Negotiation.
The second answer is to Zach Filipovic.
Okay. Thank you all. It certainly is a big issue and Don Ness, I think, has done a fairly good job of making sure that the city gets what it needs out of our workers that work for all of us, the taxpayers, and making sure that we get a good value for our dollar. In terms of healthcare and whatnot, these negotiations happen between administration and the various unions that the city workers are a part of and employ. So when Skip's talking about negotiations, he's absolutely right. And I'm thankful that we have Don and he presented his budget to this council, not this one yet, but the previous one, or the current one, I think just a month and a half ago, or maybe a little bit longer. And in there, there are no proposed revenue increases, which I'm thankful for and happy about. And in fact, those benefits are, I think they're actually increased slightly in that budget for fiscal year 2014. So I was happy to see that and I can go back and check the numbers and tell you about that if we have time. Thank you.
Next response will be from Ryan Stauber.
A hundred and ninety-plus million in unfunded liability cost is obviously troubling, but those were benefits that our city workers negotiated for way back when. And we need to honor our word to them. And we need to hold accountable the people who made those decisions way back when. You know, some of them are no longer in office, some are no longer in our community, and some are no longer with us. But we need to make sure that the blame falls solely on their shoulders. They negotiated, they okayed this, and we said so as voters, that this was okay. As for ways to deal with the unfunded liability, we really need to start looking at cutting administrative costs and not jobs. I have several ideas. Some are more specific than others, dealing with the ways, the internal ways that we do things, switching to paperless, using LED light bulbs instead of incandescent light bulbs, switching to open-source software, et cetera. A multitude of these solutions can help bring down the costs and help make that unfunded liability seem not so big.
The last would be Barb Russ.
Well, this is a very difficult situation and it goes back to, I believe, when Mayor Fito was in office, and that's quite some time ago. And at that time, of course, healthcare did not cost as much as it costs now, and I don't think that people back then realized, you know, how much the healthcare was going to increase. But I agree with Ryan Stauber that there have been negotiations all these years when contracts have come up with regard to healthcare benefits. And other things were given up in favor of these benefits. And it's hard to go back and undo things. However, this is a serious liability and the city does have to figure out how we can begin to whittle away at that unfunded liability. It's very important to work on that over the years. I don't know if the answer is going to be slight increases in the levy each year for that, or if that's going to be totally unacceptable to the administration. But I think we need to start taking a look at, you know, limiting that number. And of course, we always are going to be negotiating contracts, and this is probably going to be part of the conversation in most years. But I know that city employees are concerned about this, retirees are concerned about it. It's something that's come up at the doors as I've been door-knocking around the city. So it's an important issue and it's one that does need to be addressed.
Thank you. Our second question has to do with planning and redevelopment. This question has two parts. The mayor recently proposed a redevelopment plan for Canal Park and the Minnesota Slip. So the first part of the question is, what is your position on the proposed redevelopment plan and how it came about? And the second part of the question is, do you have any ideas or recommendations, solutions to address the underlying pollution and structural problems in the area? Ryan Stauber, we're going to start with you.
To answer the first part of the question, I think the mayor's taken a very good first step. Obviously, this is something that needs to be addressed in our community, and whether the answer that is put out by the administration is the final one or not has yet to be seen. But what it's going to require is lots and lots and lots of public input. This is our Canal Park and we need to make sure that we treat it with respect and that we treat it for future generations. The mayor's brought up a very good point, that parking is limited down there. This is one of our main tourist attractions. We do need to find places for more parking down there. We have some lots available, some are owned by Dida, and they're unpaved right now. We can certainly look at those as an option. My biggest concern with the plan is, of course, not involving the people who own that slip where the urban is parked. And we need to get them involved fully before we move forward with any plan to redevelop and clean up the Canal Park area. I have concerns about moving the urban. It's a main draw. When you drive on the interstate, you can tell. We're a shipping town, we're proud of it. And I'd hate to see that moved even just a few blocks down to one of those other slips, simply because we couldn't afford to put it there and we needed more parking. But we do need to address it, and it's really going to take all of us sitting down together at several community meetings to come up with the best ideas we possibly can. But I think it's a very good first step, and I'd like to see the discussion continued.
Yes, I agree that it is a very good first step. When I first read about it in the paper, I was a little surprised that the owners of the property had not been involved. But it is a good first proposal. I'm sure there's going to be many changes as time goes on, and the community has a chance to weigh in, the owners have a chance to weigh in. I am a little bit concerned about moving the urban. It seems like moving it down that far is going to make it less likely for some folks to even go walk down there. But I suppose it's going to depend on how that, the area between the existing slip and where the urban ends up, how that's going to be developed will make the difference. I believe there's going to be a presentation coming up in the next few days perhaps. There was something in the paper about it, I think today, about a proposal, the proposal itself and an explanation of what some of the ideas are. So I would recommend to everybody that who is interested in this, you know, attend this event, hear what's going on, and offer up, you know, any ideas that you might have. But Mr. Stauber's right, that this is going to take a while, I think, to flesh out. And we do need to do something besides fixing that bridge every few months, because that's very, very costly. And that, something needs to be done about that. And there's also some pollution problems with that slip that need to be taken care of. So it certainly is something that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, well, this plan is obviously in the first stages of development. And it got the conversation going of what to do with the slip, because the seawalls are deteriorating, Minnesota Slip is highly polluted, and of course, we know the bridge, it's not actually a design problem, but they have, the wood planks on that blue bridge, the pedestrian bridge was actually, were added and were not part of the original design. They were added to have the horse-drawn carriages go over from Canal Park to the deck area. And I thought that was interesting when I was talking with the owners of the slip. And that is a concern, not only for me and the other candidates, but to them as well, that they were not consulted at the beginning of this conversation. But as to the pollution and the structural detriment of the Minnesota Slip, there is economic development term called, it's cleanup versus containment. And we want to clean up the Minnesota Slip for sure, but there's also a way to at least contain the pollution so it does not spread into our beautiful waterway and glorious Lake Superior. And that is what is being proposed right now. I would like to see more detail of that project. And, thank you.
It's a very good discussion. And I do agree that the seawall needs to be taken care of, but I can't foresee moving that ship somewhere else. I believe that we could utilize that money that's being planned for that into other areas that the city needs it right now. And all these things need to be done, but we should set a priority. Are we worried about the slip down there and moving the ship? Or are we worried about the homelessness of the city? Where can our resources get the biggest bang? And who would it benefit more? But I am open for discussion on that, because it really needs to be talked about and not just jump into making a very quick decision. So with that, that's where I would stand on that.
Our third question is on bonding. This coming year's 2014 session will be a bonding year for the Minnesota Legislature. So our question is, what do you feel the city should prioritize when it comes to securing bonding funds for city infrastructure expenditures? We are going to start with Barb Russ.
What comes to my mind is Wade Stadium. And I know that the owners of the Huskies, as well as the community in West Duluth, were disappointed that Wade was not included the last time around, and are hoping very much that we can get some state money in order to preserve the Wade, improve the Wade. It is a gem in our community and it's not something that we want to lose. It's an important asset in West Duluth, as well as for the entire city. It's a, it should be used more. And of course, it does need a lot of work, not only, you know, the problem with the brick walls, but it's very old. It needs new bathrooms, new kitchen area, all of that, to really be able to use it for all that it's worth. But I think it's a really important historic building in our community. So that would be, I think, one of the priorities that I would be recommending for state bonding.
There's a lot of areas here in the city, there's a lot of buildings within the city that are historical, that need fixing on and being brought up to date. And when you look at bonding, I look at Wade Stadium, I look at the North Shore Project down there and things like that. What's really important to the city of Duluth? What is? Where should it go? And I think what needs to happen is let you, the citizens of Duluth aside, have your input. Bring forward what you want. You know, it's easy to maybe sit up here and make a decision, but that ain't doing you justice. I would love to hear what you think. What is important to you? What makes the city attractive? What makes people want to come here? So I would ask for the community input on the bonding. What do you think is important? Thank you.
Wade is obviously a priority in terms of state bonding. Other things that I'd like to see are some of our infrastructure problems and going back to some of that flood repair, as well as the INI projects that will be ending soon. We need to make sure that we're fully set going forward. Sometimes the issues that affect us in our own community require bonding that is not within our community. And one of the issues I would support is including state bonding, or advocating for state bonding, at the NERC Center. Part of my responsibilities as a member of the Arrowhead Regional Corrections Advisory Board, as a member of that body, is overseeing that NERC. And they provide a valuable service for those who, they're not in our jail system, yet they're still court-ordered to be in custody. So we make sure that we don't release anyone into our community who is not ready yet. And they provide valuable service, including job training, drug, mental health programs. And we help reduce recidivism in Duluth, simply by supporting something that doesn't exist within our community, but outside, but provides a valuable service for those inside our community.
Well, I've had the pleasure and honor to go down with the Duluth Chamber of Commerce for the last three years and help them advocate as a citizen lobbyist, to help convince our state legislators that Duluth is important and the projects that we have here are important as well. Wade Stadium is obviously a gem in our community and that should be a focus. But the project that I mentioned earlier tonight, the North Shore Theater, is up for bonding. And I think that that is a great example of the use of those bonding funds, if Duluth is lucky enough to get them. And, excuse me, as for community involvement with this process, the Chamber of Commerce does a great job of making sure that people in our community are able to go and advocate for the projects that they believe in. When I was a student leader at UMD, I helped to foster a partnership between the Chamber of Commerce and student leaders there. And now there is, that partnership exists to this day, where there is a student on every advocate team, and I'm proud of that accomplishment. But, like I said, I think priorities in our community, and there are many, but Wade Stadium and the North Shore Theater.
Thank you. Our next question is kind of a process question. Recent politics in Washington has resulted in the lowest reported approval rating in our US Congress in the last 40 years, by some accounts as low as 5%. An inability to resolve conflict is being targeted as one of the reasons. So our question to you is, can you please tell us of a time when you have been in conflict with others and how you came to resolution? We'll start with Ryan Stauber.
One of the most recent things that we've been in conflict with at where I work has to do with public safety standards for dispatchers and the channels that we use to communicate with our new officers. We call them Law Three, Law Two, Law One. Basically, they're different divisions of the county. What we did as employees, with lots of years of experience, is we wrote a letter to our management team saying, "We think the changes that were made are unsafe for our community." We presented it not only to our management team, but to the chiefs of police, for the departments that we oversee, as well as the sheriff and the supervising deputies that oversee us. Through collaboration and time and discussion, we were able to resolve the process. We were able to come to a mutually agreed conclusion that sometimes the first option is not the best, and that's why we have debate, that's why we have restraint, that's why we involve people before we make decisions. And that's one of the things I'd like to focus on as a city councilor, is bringing that balance, that level-headedness, and that collaborative spirit to the council to make sure that we don't just take our first available option, that we review everything, we have that healthy debate for government, and we make good government in the end.
Well, as an attorney, I sort of deal with conflict all of the time. If there weren't conflict, we wouldn't need so many attorneys, I guess. But, you know, what we learn as attorneys, and we have, you know, quite a few ethical rules that guide us, of course, but is that you can disagree about something, you can be arguing in court all day, and then, to some people's surprise, you know, opposing counsel will go and, you know, have lunch together, or can be friends outside of the conflict itself that lands you in court. I can't really think of anything other than, I can, well, going back quite a ways, once when I was president of PAFSA, and this is a number of years ago, I remember that we had assistance, we brought in assistance when there was conflict with regard to the director at the time, and that helped us, you know, sort of in a very civilized way, you know, walk through what the conflicts were and resolve that. And sometimes I think that's the best way to resolve something and keep it civil. So I'm certainly never averse to doing something of that nature.
Well, there are a couple things that I keep in mind whenever conflicts arise, and that is, whenever I'm talking with a group or a group of people that I have to work with and there's disagreement, you have to be firm but gentle, is a phrase that I like to use and like to keep in mind whenever I'm talking with people. And you always have to remember to keep the end goal of the project or of the group, whatever you're working on, in mind. So, an example of this, I was working on a marketing campaign for one of our local businesses in town, in Duluth. And we had a team, and one person didn't really want to work with the rest of the team, and it was, kind of felt to me to have that discussion with that person, to make sure that the end result came about, and we had that end result. And, you know, using that thought of firm but gentle, sat down and had that discussion, meaningful discussion, and found out what those disagreements were, and then told, said our side of the story and listened to her side of the story. And we did get that resolved, that conflict, and we kind of won the business afterwards. So it was actually a good experience and I'm glad to have it.
Conflict is good. And I say that because it motivates people. When you approach conflict, you have to approach it and be respectful to who you have the conflict with, rather than it be a group of people or a single individual, is being able to sit down and talk about the conflicts and the things that you're maybe disagree about. As long as you're listening, as long as you're being respectful to one another and being civil to one another, you'll pass through that difficult point. And therefore, there doesn't need to be no name-calling, no disrespect, because we all have our opinions, we all have our base to stand on, you know? But to sit down and be able to talk about it in a civil way and be respectful, then maybe both can sit down and have a win-win situation with the conflict that is before your eyes. As a retired corrections officer up at NERC, there was always, always conflict. And listening, being respectful, we worked through that. So, thank you.
Our next question is, the topic's pretty simple, it's about priorities. What would you identify as the two most important initiatives the city should implement going forward? And we'll start with Zach Filipovic.
My priority in this campaign has been about economic development. And it's, economic development to me is a way to help solve some of those other things that our community can improve on. Talking with people at the doors, it is about housing, and it is about streets and the underlying infrastructure. So when I'm, and I talk to voters about my plans for economic development, my vision for Duluth, and they really like it. They like the idea that Duluth is growing, that we're going to be able to have more resources with more people and more businesses in Duluth to help pay for those priorities that we have in our town. So, you know, for me, it's about looking at those solutions so we can have more resources to solve those, the issues that we have in Duluth. So I see economic development as that solution, or as at least a part of that solution for those two priorities. Thank you.
Homelessness, housing, number one priority. But also right up there is water protection ordinance. Need to protect our water. If we pollute our lake or allow it to be polluted, what is that going to do to our city? What is that going to do to our tourist industry? Those are the top priorities that I see right now. There's a lot of priorities and a lot of issues that need to be dealt with, but homelessness is, for one, is the top. Winter's coming, we have like 250 people in the city that are homeless. There have been some suggestions, there have been some meetings on that, but nothing's been gone forward on anything like that. And it was snowing today. Where are they going to go? What is our responsibility as citizens of Duluth? To our fellow citizens? What is our responsibility to our children if we allow the water to be polluted? What is the responsibility that we, as citizens of Duluth, how much are we going to take? What are we going to do? We need to act, we need action. We need words, we need money, we need all these things for just these two issues, but there's many, many other issues out there that need to be discussed and talked about. And thank you.
Issue for me going forward is street improvement. Right now, we don't even have a pothole repair program in place for next year. Our infrastructure, not just the streets, but the sidewalks, the sanitary and storm sewer lines, everything underneath is crumbling away and we don't have a way to pay for it going forward. We really need to work at that. We can use some of the ideas that are currently tabled and whatever the street improvement task force comes up with when they get done with their work. A second priority to me is jobs, and not just living wage jobs, but careers here in the Northland. And to get to that goal, I see a couple of steps, but first is obviously having solid infrastructure, second is having strong public safety. We have a heroin problem right now that's going pretty much unaddressed. And citizen empowerment. You talk to people who have a for-sale sign in their yard. They're moving away. Why? Because they're not being heard. We need to make sure that everyone feels they're being heard, their input is valuable, and that their input is regarded as the highest, most, is taken with the highest, most confidence, because in the end, citizens are the government.
Our next question is about environmental issues. Several regional environmental issues have been in the news recently. Several regional environmental issues have been in the news recently, including copper-nickel mining and plastics pollution in Lake Superior. These issues would certainly have an impact on Duluth. So, our question to you is, what role, if any, do you believe the city council should have related to regional environmental issues? And Barb Russ will start with you.
I don't think I answered the last question.
Oh, did I?
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah. I'm sorry about that.
Great. Well, no, we have a lot of priorities. I started out thinking that these, our streets and infrastructure, more importantly, under the streets, had to be a top priority. I think it's one of my top priorities for coming up with a plan. But, as I have been campaigning, as I've been talking with people, both staff at the city, the HRA, people in the nonprofit area, like LISC that are working on housing, I really believe housing is absolutely the most important thing. We have jobs available in this city from some large employers that cannot be filled because we don't have the housing for people who would move to Duluth to take those jobs, we don't have the housing available to them, that is market-rate housing for the most part. We also do have an incredible shortage of low-income housing and affordable housing. So, we need to work on housing at all levels, and I think that's really got to be a priority. Now, the city can't do all that, but the city can certainly work with all these other organizations that deal with housings, have expertise in housing, and homelessness, again, is a huge, huge problem. It's growing rather than being eliminated. We're somewhere in a 10-year plan, both the city and the county, and I don't recall just where that is, but I think that we're slowing down on eliminating homelessness. So, I would say housing, in many regards, has got to be the number-one priority. Thank you.
Lake Superior, these issues would have an impact on Duluth. So, our question to you is, what role, if any, do you believe the city council should have related to regional environmental issues?
Well, I'm not exactly sure how this will come up, you know, before the city council or city administration, but certainly, we all care about the environment, and the city needs to be a watchdog for anything that's going to affect the city of Duluth. I believe that we have good laws in place in the state of Minnesota with regard to water quality. I'm not concerned about that, but we want to make sure that anything that's happening north of Duluth, whether on the Iron Range or elsewhere, is not going to somehow, even if it's years later, going to impact our water quality of Lake Superior or elsewhere, you know, groundwater and so on. So, you know, it's hard to know exactly what the role will be, but certainly, we need to be paying attention, and where we can have a role, we need to do that.
The lake is probably our most valuable natural resource that we have here, and we do have a duty as a city and city councilors to make sure that it is protected. Several of the things that I can think above the top of my head that the city would have a direct impact on are both the INI program, which, as I mentioned earlier, is ending, you know, that inflow and infiltration of some of our sewer water that's getting into the sanitary, or, I'm sorry, the storm sewer, and is drifting off into the lake. Now, we've been taking great steps to make sure that that hasn't happened, and there's still resources available and neighborhoods that will have to go through this process to make sure that we protect the lake from that, not only the lake, but our rivers and streams, from that sanitary sewer mess going into our clean water. The other issue I see us having an effect on or an impact on is road salt. We use a tremendous amount of road salt, and we sometimes dump it very close to the lake, and that salt drifts off and sinks into the ground and then sinks into the lake, and it does have an effect on the quality of water that we drink here and use here in Duluth.
Recently, Duluth was named among the top 10 most beautiful college towns, right up there with Boston, Massachusetts, and Boulder, Colorado. And the lake is a huge part of that, along with our 137 city parks. These natural places are what help make Duluth Duluth. Though it's imperative that we do take steps to make sure that they are protected in an environmental way. You know, one of the things that we're talking about, the Lake Superior, but the St. Louis River Valley is actually, right now, on the Minnesota Protection or Pollution Control Agency's kind of top 10 sites, areas of concern, if you will. And the city is working right now to help clean that up, and I want to make sure that that cleanup continues. I know from my professional and business and accounting experience that there are businesses that make their living off of the beauty that we have in our area, more specifically, that St. Louis River Valley, you know, kayaking tours and hiking tours and the like, those types of businesses. Those low-impact developments, like the Cross City Trail, are awesome. I want to see those continue because they do a number of things incurring, well, we'll get to that later, I guess.
Our next question is about workforce retention. Oh, are you kidding? I did it again. I'm so sorry. Jeez.
First of all, I want to say I'm not against mining, I'm not against the pipeline. Okay? But I want to make sure that our city, our waterways, and our environments is protected. You proved to me that it's safe. They had some ideas out there where they wanted to barge some tar sands from Superior up to Sioux-St. Marie somewhere. Now, we all know that barges leak, we all know that ships leak, no matter how well they are constructed. What happens if one of them sinks? If a pipeline breaks, gets into the St. Louis River, which is already polluted, comes down through the bay, comes down and goes out in Lake Superior? What can we do? I want to make sure that, I know as a city councilor, I would not have that much authority here, but I would like to make sure is that we enact a city ordinance for water protection on the waterfronts, 17 miles long, five miles wide. All it takes is one burst in a pipeline, and we can kiss our water goodbye, because it would be years of us trying to get it cleaned up. And I also want to make sure that the city does not subsidize it.
I think we're ready to go to workforce retention, I think. Duluth has historically had issues with retaining our workforce, especially young professionals who have obtained advanced degrees. Our question to you is, please describe a city council-based effort that you might propose, or an existing effort that is already working, to help attract and retain skilled workers in the region if you are elected. And we'll start with Zach Filipovich.
Well, this is an issue that is very dear to my heart, because I am a young professional, I am one of those recent college graduates who made my life here in Duluth. We need to engage people, and it's being done right now by a number of groups. Just today, there was, I forget exactly what the conference was called, but it was a big thing at the deck where over 1,200 students from across our area attended and learned about the various jobs here in our city and in our region. I think it was called Kids Plus, and Peter Pass can make sure that I get that right. So, this, engaging students and making sure that we have, that they know that Duluth is a place for them, we have a few organizations doing that. Twin Ports Connects is one of them, and I'm going to just talk about them quickly. What they do is they talk to you and do like a little interview with a recent person who wants to make their life in Duluth, and they connect that person after finding out what their strengths are and what their interests are, find a number of contacts and introduce them, that person, to those potential employers. And I know that that works. We need more of it. I think as a city councilor and as a community leader, I would be in the position to help promote those organizations and make sure students know about them.
If elected to the council, I would do my best to entice new employment, come and check out our city and maybe develop their businesses here. I look at, like Zach was saying earlier, it's a beautiful city, we have some of the best colleges around in the state as far as I'm concerned, but we're losing them. Why are we losing them? Is that we don't have enough jobs. We do not. So, what we have to do as a city council is try to entice businesses in to the city to develop those jobs. One of the things is that we need, we need that, we need the jobs. I look back as we're losing all our well-educated, our majority of our well-educated, and even the citizens that have been here, because we do not have the jobs for them. So, as a city councilor, I would do my best to try to entice that. Tourism is great, but it's not for everyone. It doesn't help everyone. So, thank you.
I'm not certain if we could have some sort of direct program that was solely meant for encouraging young people to find a job here. There's lots of people, when they graduate, or, you know, whether it be high school or college, that say, "I want to live in Duluth. I really do, but there's no jobs here." So, we need to do our best to support these emerging career paths, new businesses, expanding businesses, that want to be here. So, as a councilor, the best thing you can do, in that sense, is make sure that those businesses not just know that we exist, but know that we're favorable to new business, know that we're willing to help them develop. You know, we can use, the TIF districts, I believe we still have a patch of land that's Job Z Zone from the Palenti administration, down off the interstate in Garfield, we have these areas available. We need to make sure that we use them and encourage new businesses to expand here and to grow here. You hate reading or watching the news and finding out, "Oh, we lost another business, we've lost another couple hundred jobs." You know, we need to make sure that people are coming here, not leaving.
Well, I really think that there are some good signs that this is turning around. I know in my last couple of years at the county attorney's office, and when I was in a position of doing some hiring, is we were seeing a number of young people, young attorneys, who had some experience outside of Duluth, had left Duluth, of course, to go to law school, and were just waiting for an opportunity to move back, because now they were married, had young children, and really wanted to move back and be near family and raise their children here. And we were able to hire some of those folks. I know the law firms in the city, around the country, actually, in 2008 laid off a lot of attorneys because of the recession, and I'm noticing now in the paper notices all the time about the law firms adding new associates, and so that's very encouraging. There also are jobs available, unfortunately, we don't have people here who have the right training, for example, jobs at Serus and jobs at AAR, and those are good jobs. Lake Superior College is stepping up to that issue and providing now the kind of training needed for people who already live here to become, you know, qualified for those jobs. So, I think there's a lot of pieces of the puzzle, but I'm seeing encouraging signs. We've almost got the cleanup done down at the old steel plant in the Atlas and so on, the cement plant, and those are going to be opportunities for development as well that will create good jobs.
This is our last question in this set, and it's going to be on representing constituents. As a councilor at large, if you are elected, you will be serving the most inclusive and yet diverse group of constituents in our city. What strategies will you use to enhance communication with the various neighborhoods and community representatives? And we will start with Ryan Staber.
One of the things that actually inspired me to run was some Ivanhoe Street reconstruction. Ivanhoe Street exists in the Rock Ridge Development Area of Northern Lakeside, and it comes down to neighborhood values versus city values. The city was trying to impose on the neighborhood residents there a completely different street than they wanted. At the time, my mother lived on the street, and I took part in some of these meetings. And it was very interesting to hear, you know, the city says, "This is what we want, this is our plan." The neighbors stood up almost unanimously and said, "That's not even close to what we want." So, it took a grand effort by those citizens to approach the city council and say, "This is what we want, can you please back us?" And they did, by a majority of five to four. That's the sort of mentality that I want to bring to the city council, is neighborhood values versus these city values. And I've been out door knocking, obviously, I hit about 8,000 doors so far this campaign season, and one of the things I told my fiance was, "Should I be elected? This is something I'd probably like to continue. If there's something that affects the neighborhood directly, I'm going to put on my shoes, put on my jacket, and I'm going to go out there and knock on the doors and say, 'Hi, my name's Ryan, I'm your city councilor, this is what's happening, I'd like to hear what you have to say.'"
Well, I very much am interested in focusing on neighborhoods in the city of Duluth. We have an unbelievable number of very interesting and diverse neighborhoods in this city. I'm concerned about youth recreation, I want to collaborate with the school district around that issue. But with regard to, you know, constituent services, I'm told that, you know, if I am elected and then in January sworn in, my phone will start ringing at 8 o'clock each morning. So, I fortunately am retired, and so I will have an awful lot of time and energy to vote to constituent services. But mostly, I really am interested in focusing on neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods don't all have libraries anymore, they don't all have a community center that's available for youth recreation, other than perhaps hockey, and I think we need to focus on blight in the neighborhoods, and people are very concerned about that. And I know we have some programs that are addressing that, but I want to make sure that we hold the city and HRA accountable and other agencies involved with those programs to follow through and continue to work with our neighborhoods, to provide the best possible environment for children to grow up in.
There's a quote that was said by a smart guy a while back, "Decisions are made by those who show up." And I truly believe that. It shows tonight in this room, but it also shows every other night that there are citizens ready to speak during city council meetings. But, a conversation, as government should be with citizens, is a two-way street. It's easier for some people to come and stand at that podium and talk about their issues to the entire body and really to the entire community. But what I would want to do is do my absolute best to get out into the community, attend community events, and hear from citizens directly, one-on-one conversations, small-group conversations, as much as I can. Ryan mentioned going back and hitting the doors. That's funny, because I enjoy my time at the doors as well, and it's fascinating to me to hear people's stories and to hear what, take that pulse of the community and find out what they're tracking on. So, citizens, it's your responsibility to come to the city council with issues, but it is also our responsibility to go to you, at least to ask what your issues are and to inform what we're thinking about and what we're tracking on. So, decisions are made by those who show up.
I love to talk to people. I love to talk to people. I love to listen to people. I love to hear their concerns. And it doesn't matter if my phone rings at eight in the morning if I am elected in January. My phone is always on. Doesn't matter where you live at in the city, because the city is the city. You are the ones that count, the citizens of Duluth. If you have a concern, let me know. Something's not right, let me know. And I'll do my best to remedy that, whatever that may be. All my life, I've listened to people and helped people the best way that I can. If it means driving in a snowstorm to help you, I'm willing to do that. On the phone is great. I love to talk to people. I love to listen to people. Anybody that knows my past, that's what I've done since the time I was 17 years old, is listen and try to help people the best way that I can. And I'm willing to listen to you. And also, an open door. Come knock on it. There's always coffee on. Thank you.
The next section of our forum is going to be on audience questions, or with audience questions. So our first audience question is, "A recent survey indicates that the majority of Park Point residents favor keeping access to the bay and the beach open to the public use. What is your position on maintaining public access?" And we will start with Barb Russ.
... there about this issue. Apparently, the city is interested in vacating some of the roads that are actually not, you know, fully developed roads, but have been pathways to the bay primarily, I think is the concern. I think absolutely there has to continue to be public access. And it sounds like the city is very willing to talk about having plenty of access. And the important thing, I think, for the citizens there who are concerned about people, you know, walking through their private property, there just needs to be clear signage out there. Apparently, it's, there are some worn paths in some spots, and not good signage as to where it's okay for the public to access the bay and where it is not. So I certainly think they've got to keep some public access, in fact, a lot of public access. And that, of course, if there was enough signage and sufficient opportunities for people to access the bay, that'll cut down on the problems of people having to, you know, deal with people, you know, going through their yards to get to the water.
Well, my initial thought is, of course, if there's a survey that says the residents support this, then obviously that's where I'd lean, and I'd support it as well. We have to find that balance between maintaining public access and maintaining that private property. And that means working on those problem areas in those spots, those hotspots along the point. Make sure it's not a problem. And maybe there's a solution that works better on one street than somewhere else, but we need to work with everyone, make sure their voice is heard, make sure their opinion is validated, and make sure that we have a solution to this. Because if it's a problem, it's going to continue to be a problem. We need to find a solution.
Words right out of my mouth. I agree with that, what Ryan said here, is that we need to work with the people down there and be able to have some access there, but not to the point of where it's detrimental to the park, to the point out there. It's a beautiful place. Been out there. I've talked with people. So, it's open. I agree with Ryan. Thank you. Took the words right off.
Public access on Park Point is extremely important, but as is private property and property rights in our city, including Park Point. There's a forum recently on this issue, I believe, talking about that and making sure citizens are doing their best to make sure citizens are engaged in that process. And with the survey, if the citizens are for it in that area, you know, let's make sure that we do it right. And let's make sure that, when we do it, that citizens are still engaged throughout the process, not just at the beginning, when the question was initially asked. Park Point is the largest natural sandbar for fresh water in the world. And it's a huge draw. It's a huge gem and resource for not only tourists, but also citizens. It's a place to come for spiritual revivement. And we need to make sure that those areas where appropriate to have access to the waterfront are clearly labeled and people are, there's no doubt, where the public access is and where private property begins. So, thank you.
The next audience question is, "With the rise of homelessness in Duluth, what will you as a city councillor do to help those in need?" And we'll start with Skip Sandman.
It's a complex issue to talk about homelessness. But I believe what needs to be done is we need to take responsibility as a city, and that is put some funding in there. I look at, there's a lot of foreclosed houses in here, in the town. And, because what we have right now is not adequate enough. We need to expand that. We need to encourage, how would I say, encourage the programs that are available there, is make sure that they have enough funding, and maybe even start some own funding. But when you actually look at homelesses, you're also looking at poverty. We need to have something that gives the people hope, something, some kind of programs that are in place that encourage people to step forward and get out of poverty. So it's a complex issue, and it's not an easy issue to handle, because there is no quick solution. Homelessness, there's a ten-year plan from Steve O'Neill. We need to look at that and continue on with his dream. So, thank you.
It is a complex issue with many, many factors. Myself, I actually went on an outreach program with Joel Kilgore and Loews &amp; Fishes to see for myself and to get that other perspective and just to see what people are going through, because I am not from that background. And I wanted to see what things were like when I wore somebody else's shoes. And I was actually able to talk with a few people who are homeless. This was actually a week before, underneath in Graffiti Graveyard, before the police had their press conference and that. And there are people that are homeless who have jobs. There are a lot of people that are homeless who have jobs. We need to make sure that jobs in our community are living wage jobs, that they're good jobs, that we have opportunities and the programs for people to help themselves and for them to take the first step into getting that better job, not just one at Burger King or a waitressing job or whatnot, not to, not, you know. But one thing that we do need, and Barb was talking about, we have a 1.5% vacancy rate for low-income housing in Duluth. That needs to be solved. There are projects currently underway, the Lincoln Park project done by Sherman Associates that will help with that, but it is not enough. And I'm done with my time.
I'll echo the sentiments. It's obviously a very complex issue. Some of the things that I see as a city council having a role in that would be first, finding emergency shelters for those cold winter nights. Right now, it's about 30 outside. Imagine spending the night out there, and it's only going to get colder. A second thing is making sure that those who are homeless know there are options and resources available. We have day-one resources, people who are willing to help out, places, organizations that are willing to provide that foot up, so to speak, so that we can get people back on track. And it was mentioned earlier, but housing availability is an issue in our community. And it's not just, you know, we need to have more low-income apartments. We need to have more single-family homes. And that really comes down to our property tax issue as well, you know, combined with the levy. We want to make sure that people are willing to live in Duluth and not just outside. We have lots of people, for various reasons, jobs, school district or otherwise, that want to move to Proctor or Hermantown, or even outside the townships in Lakewood and Rice Lake.
A very complicated issue. I've been talking with Loews &amp; Fishes over the recent weeks. We had a poverty forum that was very enlightening to those who haven't had a lot of experience with this population. You know, it's complex in that you're dealing with people with disabilities who can't work, people who are working. You're dealing with mental illness sometimes. I mean, it's, there's no, you know, one group of people that you can describe that are homeless. And Loews &amp; Fishes can only do so much. Chum can only do so much. There just aren't enough beds. And, you know, the issue of winter coming is a big deal. There are people who, in nicer weather, are camping out all throughout our city. And where it's near, you know, neighborhoods, it's concerning to people in those neighborhoods. It's, you know, I've been down to the Graffiti Graveyard myself, and it was unbelievable, the number of tents that were there, and people are actually living there. And as Zach said, some of those people go to work in the morning and come back there, and they have developed a community for themselves. But that's not going to be viable for most people. We have to plug in and support the organizations that are working with this population. And again, I just can't say enough, housing, housing, housing. We need housing in the city, and we need it soon. Thanks.
And if you'll all be okay with it, I'm just going to turn all the mics on. So, I'm not very good with these things anyway. So the first phrase is, "Size of city government," and we're going to start with Zach Filipovic.
Size of city government needs to be appropriate for the job. Let citizens do what they want, but make sure that there are safety standards in place so people don't get hurt. That 15 seconds.
Skip Sandman?
What was the question again?
Size of city government.
Well, one of the things that I think that needs to be looked at here when you talk about city government is, are we duplicating anything? And if so, maybe it needs to be scaled back. So, duplication.
Ryan Staber?
I like the answer appropriate. Good government, it makes sure citizens are safe and happy. That's essentially the extent of good government. That's exactly where I want to direct the city government.
Barb Russ?
What immediately comes to my mind is parks and rec. It's my understanding that parks and rec has been dramatically reduced in terms of the staffing. I think we need to take a look at that. It's important to our neighborhoods. I'd like to see more parks and rec opportunities for children in their neighborhoods.
Next phrase is, "Minimum wage," and we'll start with Barb Russ.
Well, the minimum wage needs to be raised. Now, the city of Duluth can't raise the minimum wage. The state of Minnesota can, and there's a big campaign that's ongoing to raise the minimum wage. Minimum wage, even the $9.50, that's...
Pretty quick, isn't it?
Boy, it is.
Ryan Staber?
We're in the bottom three of the United States. Again, it's a state issue. As far as the city goes, I'd like to make sure that everyone has a living wage. I don't agree the best way to do that is through the law, though.
Skip Sandman?
I agree the minimum wage needs to be raised here in this town. We do need a living wage. And we need it. There's no but-ins around it.
The minimum wage is a state issue, and I do support those efforts made by the Northeast Area Labor Council to increase that. To me, higher minimum wages equals more disposable income and incentive for businesses to come and have more, have a bigger, broader consumer base in this area.
Next phrase is, "Duluth's infrastructure," and we'll start with Skip Sandman.
It's crumbling. It needs to be done. It needs to be looked at, but we need to set a priority of where we can spend our money, get the most done for the least amount of bucks. It really needs to be worked on all over the city.
Long-term funding solutions is what we need to help alleviate this problem. Not bonding, not short-sighted things. We need to have a wide-range community discussion to talk about new funding solutions and possibly a street improvement fund designation.
Barb Russ?
Yes, it's old. It's old in many parts of our city. I live on a street where the covert over the stream that goes behind our house collapsed 30 feet down a number of years ago. And that's what's been happening throughout this city, is there's emergencies, and that's, it's more costly to fix it that way.
Ryan Staber?
It's weak. It's crumbling. It's my top priority, and it's, we need a solution that's going to last us decades.
Last phrase, "Northern Lights Express." We'll start with Ryan Staber.
Proceed with caution.
Barb Russ?
Yes, I'm a supporter of the Northern Lights Express.
Zach Filipovic?
As am I. There was a, one of my friends did a whole project on it, so I know all about it, and I think it's a good idea if we do it right.
Caution. You approach things cautiously. You don't jump in with both feet. Take a look at what you're really looking at, and then look again. Caution.
Thank you very much for answering the questions, and we'll now move into the closing statements. You have two minutes for that, and we're going to start that with Skip Sandman.
I believe if I'm elected to the city council, that I bring a lot of good qualities. Number one is I listen to people. Number two, I'm not a yes-man. Number three is I'm really concerned about what's going on in the city, and I care about our children. I care about living wings jobs. I care about our homeless people. I care about the poverty. I care about our water. There's a lot of issues here in this city that needs to be addressed. And I believe if I am elected, I will start instituting some of those changes that need to be done. Number one priority is homelessness and the water protection ordinance. Thank you.
Zach Filipovic?
I feel truly blessed to be living in Duluth and to have a great job. I am an accountant here in town, and before that, I did economic development work with a nonprofit called Apex, one of the leading drivers behind many of our projects in Duluth, one of which there was presented at last night at the city council meeting with the 425 Corporate Tower. Economic development, to me, is a big part of solving these issues. My kind of top three priorities, like I've said, streets and infrastructure, community safety, and parks and recreation. And, you know, when we're talking about community involvement and parks and recreation. And, you know, when we're talking about community involvement and what the city council can do, I find out there are three controllables that you can kind of take control of in your own personal lives. And I've learned this throughout my experience in the professional world. The people that you surround yourself with, make sure that they are of good moral fiber and know what they're talking about. The information that you take in, make sure that it can be verified, that it's credible from a credible source. And three, your attitude. If you're going to get anything done, you're going to have to have a positive attitude, because that is the very first thing, the very first step that you need to do and say, "This project can be done." And I take that to heart. I'm a -- I am very positive in my own personal life, and I'm very positive and forward-thinking when it comes to our city. I truly believe that Duluth's best days are ahead of us, and they will be with your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. My priorities as a city councillor are going to be all about working with others to find solutions for problems facing Duluth. And you've heard some discussion tonight about a number of issues that are going to present challenges ahead. In my job with St. Louis County, I spent thirty years learning how to help departments solve problems within the limitations of the statutes. I'm familiar with statutes that govern municipalities, including the city as well as the county. I'm familiar with financing, the financing laws for municipalities. I'm familiar with economic development tools. I have had the experience of working on major projects like the Northwest Airlines Base, which is now occupied by AAR, thankfully, and I believe is still owned by Greta. That was a very complex project. Many of the other projects I did were not so complex, such as Ely Senior Housing Facility. I, you know, I think we need to collaborate more with the school district, especially with regard to youth recreation. I'd like to see the city and the school work together on that. Use those new schools that we have. There's community space available in each school for communities to use. You know, I think, as I've said before, we really need to focus on our neighborhoods. Blight is a problem throughout the city, including where I live, near UMD, because of rental housing that's being ignored by the owners. Lincoln Park is another example. My experience of leadership in the community for many nonprofits, and I've served as president or chair of many of them as well, including PAVSA, the YWCA, Duluth Sister Cities, Pilgrim Congregational Church Board of Trustees, Eleventh District Bar Association, and Community Action Duluth, both of the latter I am serving on at this time as well. I believe my experience is important, and I -- anyone who has any questions at all about that, I'd be happy to discuss it with you. Thank you.
Ask yourself what traits you'd want in a city councillor. You probably want someone who listens, someone who leads, who helps out, who knows the city well. That's what I get paid to do for a living when I work at 911. You probably want someone who's been through it before, not only as a citizen who had their street redesigned, or someone who had to go up and fight city hall and fight the city councillors to get something changed or amended. And not just, you know, someone who's been to the meetings, but someone who knows the sacrifice of what our city employees do. And not just the administrative ones, but our police and firefighters as well. My mother's older brother was a police officer who was killed in the line of duty in April of 1990. I've seen what tragedy looks like in city government. You probably want someone who's experienced, who's recognized. I think my civic experience speaks for itself. You'd want someone who's honest, who's open, who's level-headed, independent, and dedicated. What I seek to bring to the city council is balance and debate, making sure that we've got good government as we go forward. You'd probably want someone to guarantee those three ideals, that Duluth is safe, happy, and successful. As I said before, both in my professional and volunteer experience, that's what I live for. I want to make sure that we live up to those three ideals. I do want to thank you all for attending, the League for putting this on, anyone who's watching this at home, and PAC TV for making that possible. I think we've got a great group of candidates up here, and I think I speak for all of us when I say we'd all appreciate it if you'd go out and vote on November 5th. If you'd like any more information about me, feel free to ask me or visit votestauber.com. Thank you.
That concludes our forum for tonight. It is our purpose in sponsoring these meetings to provide you with the opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues face-to-face that are important to you. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues, though, so if your questions weren't addressed, you should feel free to contact the candidates directly. We hope this program has helped you learn more about the candidates and the issues so that you can make informed choices at the polls on Election Day on November 5th. If you have questions about finding a precinct, our greeters at the doors have precinct finders, and we'll be glad to help you with that. I also, if I can turn the page here, can give you the PAC TV schedule. I got a note during this that they did get the videotape working, so it should be a decent tape to watch. It'll be on PAC Channel 7, Saturday, November 2nd. It'll be shown at midnight and again at 5:00 p.m. On Sunday, there are night owls. Sunday, November 3rd at 1:00 p.m., Monday, November 4th at 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., and again at 7:00 p.m. This schedule will be on the Duluth League of Women Voters website, if you want to refer to it again. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level. And while we, as a league, do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political candidates. Again, the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not those of the league. Additionally, the sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement by the League of Women Voters of any of the candidates who participated. We do encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to become civically involved in your community and the political party of your choice. We thank the candidates, the city of Duluth, PAC TV, and you for making this all possible. Thank you for coming, and please remember to vote on November 5th.